9th, 2017. Commissioners Court is meeting in special session for budget hearings. Regular agenda, item two. Discuss and take appropriate action on the fiscal year 2017-2018 budget with the county of El Paso, Texas. Item three. Pursue it to Health and Safety Code Section 775.305. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve or deny the recommended budget and tax rates for the Emergency Services District Number One and Emergency Service District Number Two.
Thank you, Pat. Good morning.
Good morning.
Thanks for being here. We appreciate you presenting your budget to us again this year. Hard to believe that we're back, but thank you for being back. And as you can see, we have a little monitor in front of you so you're not straining your neck like you were in previous years, and I think you have the clicker, so the floor is yours.
Okay. So I'm Catherine Ains. I'm the administrative accountant. I brought with me the fire chief, Chief Menendez, and the administrator, Ron Larson, and our attorney, Richard Contreras. So we are here, as the judge said, to present our budget for this year. So we want to talk, begin with a little bit of our highlights for this year for the ESD and the Fire Department. First of all, in the ESD, we are staffed with four full-time equivalents and three part-time employees this year. The Fire Marshal's Office has grown to five employees this year with plans to staff two additional part-time positions. We have had a rise in construction for residential and commercial, and the number of code-compliant businesses this year has steadily increased, which was an estimated of 30% compliance in 2013, increasing to 80% compliance in 2017. So we're very excited about that, that we have more businesses that are following the Fire Code and that we have a fantastic Fire Marshal's Office. So this is a little of a graph to kind of show you more or less where we are with our operational construction permits. So construction permits are ones of new construction, and operational are permits that are required, such as LPG, gas, assembly, place of assembly, those types of things. So from 2013 to 2017, you can see we started at 167 operation on construction permits, and we have now our estimated completion of this year, and these are based on calendar year. It's 416. So we have seen about a 35 to 30 to 35% increase in the last few years just in construction and operational permits for our district. So that just attests to the size of our district growing. Okay, on our next slide is for the Fire Department highlights. I'm going to link to the fire chief to present this portion.
So some of the Fire Department highlights we've had this year. We increased our volunteer staffing from what we were at 35 to approximately 48 volunteers. On top of those 48 volunteers, we have seven officers who handle different disciplines, different parts of the department, administrative stuff. We also increased or added a infection control nurse, who, mind you, is also volunteer, which we are very pleased to have her onboard. With the increase in call volume, obviously, we've had an increase with exposures and injury, and so she is the one who handles this part of the program, and she really manages it and makes sure that we're complying with all the different entities that are out there, including Tech Department of Health and the EMS program. We have also added this year, if you recall, last year, an advanced life support program. We had requested last year's budget. This year, we are able to accommodate and get TDAH to approve on this. We have a medical director who charges a minimal fee for his services, and so our capabilities from basic life support to advanced life support, meaning IV care, some medications, has increased, and so we're able to provide a better service to the people we serve. This year, we went out, one of our big pushes is public relations. We like going out there and meeting with the kids, meeting with the public, and talking about fire safety, talking about playing with matches. And this year alone, we touched over 6,500 kids in regards to fire safety, which was very impressive. And with that being said, I'd like to contribute that along with the Fire Marshal's Office to a decrease in fires that we've had in our district. And so I like to say that was a hand-in-hand type of program, that we have seen huge benefit in regards to that. With that, we saw an increase of call volume of about 16%. We're projected to hit 3,536 calls this year, and so every year, we have always seen an increase. We have not yet seen an increase in the 25 years that I've been on this department. It's always gone up. I've never seen anything stay status quo or go down. It's always going up, sometimes bigger than others, and this year, we've had a substantial increase, but nonetheless, we are prepared and able to respond to these calls. If you recall, last year, we had talked about adopting or creating a county search and rescue team. Initially, we started off with 11 members. Since then, we've grown to 33. We've also encompassed the El Paso Sheriff's Office with Chief Wiles. He's allowed us to utilize his personnel. We have seven personnel from his department as part of the team, and he is taking care of any overhead costs. He's allowing them to respond to our emergencies, train with us, he's providing the gear, the equipment, and then we've also included the surrounding Fire Departments as one entity. We are now the county search team, providing a service to the entire county. This year, we had five activations. Of those activations, we had two of them were water rescues in the canals. We had cars go into the canal system with the water flowing. Most of them were simple in the fact that they only averaged about two to three hours for response. We did have one technical rescue that required several hours, meaning more manpower, a little bit more technical using ropes, knots, and systems to get the individual out. Thankfully, we have had a great success rate with rescues. We have not had any fatalities, and so that's always a plus. And you always hear the Frank the Mountains, there's calls always going out on the Frank the Mountain area. We cover the Waco Mountains and the surrounding county part, and so we've been very successful, and we hope to continue the program as we move forward. The last thing we did was we established an inter-agency operability, which basically what we did was we combined all the Fire Departments onto one common top group, allowing that common top group allow for better communications amongst different departments, and I know a chief of the own or commissioner would understand that and the public sector, that it's very important to be able to communicate with the counterparts and be able to communicate with different entities, and we were able to do that this year with the program we So here, what we have here is a six-year trend, talking about where we started in 2011 up to current. You can see, call volume again has gone up. EMS calls is always going to be our majority for call volume. We're always prepared for fires, and that's what we ask for fire trucks and fire stations. We've got to be prepared for that, but right now, the call volume is EMS. That averages, plus or minus about 85 to 90% of our call volume is medical calls. You'll see in 2013, a sudden increase in mutual aid given or received, and that is because that is when we started the stacker program, which allows for firefighters to be staffed at the station 24/7, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and all on a volunteer basis. And so they do not get a salary. Again, they are volunteers. They do receive a little bit of a stipend, but again, they are still considered volunteers. In 2016, you'll see the mutual aid went down just a little bit on 142 calls. Our fire totals went to 93 calls. That encompasses house fires, car fires, brush fires. It isn't just building fires. It encompasses any type of fire that we may encounter. I believe we forwarded to Mr. Wally a synopsis of all the call volume we had, and it talked about how many structural fires we had for that period of time, which I believe off the top of my head was 11, and that information was forwarded to Mr. Harrow for that. On the next slide, I think this is one of our most impressive slides for us, is that being a volunteer entity, you'll see in 2012, our door-to-door, which was from time of call to the time we arrived to the scene, was 10 minutes and 30 seconds. That was the average. You notice in 2013, that went down to seven minutes, and you'll see a green line there. So the EMS standard is about eight minutes, is what they say. And the less than eight minutes, you are compliant, and the more than eight minutes, you are noncompliant. And so in 2013, when we adopted the program, you'll see we went down to seven minutes, and as time went on, in 2014, 2015, in 2014, you'll see a decrease. In 2015, we adopted where we picked up MCTs, which is your mobile computer terminals, and that really gave us a more accurate definition or timeframe on when we truly are en route and when we truly arrive on the scene, where we push a button and it puts us as a timestamp when we leave the station and when we arrive at the station, or arrive at the call. And so you saw that little bit of an increase in 2015, and then 2016, and then now currently in 2017, we're averaging about seven minutes, 13 seconds. Also, mind you, those increases in time are because our district, our response times, the areas that are growing or establishing neighborhoods are further from our current fire station, and that is one of the problems that we're seeing, is the established area, the Horizon area, and the surrounding of Paso County area is growing. And so as our area grows, obviously, our response times grow with that also, and so we're having some response or some growing pains, for lack of a better word, and so we're looking at possibly, you'll see in the further slides, trying to do something a little bit different, maybe creating a fire station or a different response area.
Okay, so what we did is this year, we have dropped the graph to some maps to show you our district and what our district encompasses. So here, you'll see that Horizon City is 8.6 square miles of our total district area. So while it's a very small area, obviously, it's the area that was the most populous area, but we're finding that it's not anymore. Okay, so that gives you a map of our area. What this gives you is, this dotted line right here is the city of Horizon. That's their area. So the pink area shows you which areas are the fastest growing in our district. So you can see, it's all around Horizon City are some of the fastest growing areas, and that's just an overview of those areas. So you see the Colonial Revolution, Paso del Este, Sparks Edition, El Paso Hills, Horizon View Estates, Aguadulce area, and the Lake Way Estates. This kind of zooms in to show you a little bit of what the overview of those, a few of those areas are, the Horizon View Estates and the Aguadulce Estates. Then again, that dotted line represents that all that growth is outside the city of Horizon. This is also another overview. As you can see, what we were looking at is what areas are the fastest growing, and the area off of East Lake is the fastest growing, and the Emerald Estates, the Paso del Estes. So the star indicates where we are currently in negotiations to buy land for a second station. So we really looked at where is the most of the growth, where is the area that is larger than five miles outside of the radius of our fire district, of our current fire station, and where would a second station need to be? You know, years ago, we thought it was going to be down Ascension. We thought it was going to be in El Paso Hills, and we're finding now it's East Lake. So we're working aggressively with the Hunt Group to secure land in this area, and they are very excited about having a fire station in their area, so they've been very cooperative. So this is our estimated population growth. So in 2010, as you know, that was the year of the census, and so the city of Horizon is only 16,735, which is 33% of our total population in our district. In 2015, again, this is just the census estimate of the population. So Horizon City did grow to 18,981. We did find that most of the growth occurred between 2010 and 2011 for them. After 2011, it really has slowed down immensely. So our total population, again, an estimate by the census, is 56,629, which gives us about a 14% population increase from 2010 to 2015 in our overall territory, whereas Horizon City only saw about a 13%. So that gives you an idea of why Horizon City, and speaking with Horizon City as well, they are pretty much locked in. They don't have a lot of area to grow, so their tax base is pretty much what it is. So what we're finding is, while they're just a small portion, our area of tax base is really all of the area around them. So what we're focusing is our efforts as to how are we going to help those areas outside of the city of Horizon. Okay, so that gives you some background information, what we've done for the year, data regarding our area, so now let's dive into the budget. Okay, so as our budget breakdown is, as you can see, our number one area where our money that we budgeted is going to is payroll and salaries at 23%. The second highest area would be liability and interest at 22%. The third area is capital improvements, which is at 16%. The fourth area is general expenses at 10%. And then in the fifth position, between professional services at 7% and collection, dispatch, and radio usage fees at 7%. And then we also have equipment at 2%, and that wraps up the pie chart. Under the budget summary, what we did is just to kind of give you a snapshot of every category that is represented in the pie chart and the increase and decrease that we saw and what are some of our explanations. So the ESD Number One Board of Commissioners approved a budget of $2,939,014.33 for the 2017-2018 fiscal year. This is an increase of $285,955, or 10.78% over the 2016-2017 fiscal year budget. So where is all the money going? Well, under payroll and salaries, this area did see an increase of $38,439, or 6.11%. And this is mostly because we're finding that we have to increase our staff. The Fire Marshal's Office is very busy, as I showed in the construction and operational permit, that there is a lot of business and growth, and that's just permitting. That's not annual business inspections. So we found that the Fire Marshal's Office needed a lot more staff, and then we're finding as well, in the administration side, that the number of hours required to keep up with our district has increased. So that is the reason for payroll and salary increase. Under professional services, the increase was $54,200, or 32.99%, and mostly, it's associated with the fees for the second station. We're looking at an architect fees and permitting fees to get that project moving along. Repair and maintenance, this category's increased by 6,500, or 5.16%. This was due to a slight increase in the repairs to the fire station. As you know, as every building gets older, there's a little more repairs needed each year. Also, there is an increase in funds to repair Fire Department equipment. As it ages, it requires more maintenance and more to continue its compliance with fire standards. Collection, dispatch, and radio usage fees, this area decreased by $1,519, or 0.68%. This category was decreased due in part to 911 covering our radio fees this year, which offset a slight increase of dispatching services and property tax collection fees. Under equipment, this category increased by $2,735, or 5.21%. There were decreases amongst most line items, however, an increase was seen in vehicle equipment due to the age of emergency lighting. We are finding that we did a large purchase of emergency lighting several years ago, and now a lot of that needs to be replaced. And then also, an increase for our special operations as the chief's point two to support the growing team and the continued development of that program. Under Fire Department supplies, this category decreased by $14,580, or 11%. This category saw a decrease in amount due to the uniform supplies and tactical equipment budgeted being reduced. The last year, there was a complete change in uniforms for more professional appearance and operations, and since then, they're just now on a maintenance to continue the uniform policy. Supplies were reduced as we had purchased necessary equipment to effectively work around the stations last fiscal year, and those expenses would not be necessary this year. And lastly, tactical equipment was reduced because of the current replacement program in place. And then there's an expected cost to replace SCBA bottles, which is another real big area for us in the next few years, and we've tackled this area in our capital improvement plan. As fire standards change, so do the bottles that we have. In other words, the SCBA is the bottles that they use when they're in a fire situation. So it's not just the bottles, it's also the packs, it's also the equipment to fill the bottles, and so we're also tackling that very large expense in the next few years. So it's been put into our capital improvement plan.
And your breeding apparatus bottles have the same thing like our bulletproof vests do.
Yes.
After a certain amount of time, they have to be retired, so.
And they can only be what they call hydrostatic testing, where they test them to determine the durability and to make sure they're up to standard, and that can only be done so many times before the bottle has to be retired. So for example, this year, we're replacing 10 bottles, but then in a few, either next year or the year prior, the next budget year, we have a mass amount of bottles because that's when we bought that amount.
NFPA is changing the compliance standard that we're going to have to, we have to do what they say we're going to go to.
Under general expenses, this category decreased by $44,973, or 13.22%. It saw a budgeted decrease in 14 sub-accounts in this area, no changes in four of the accounts, and then an increase in eight. The main increases were due to an increase in Fire Department personnel, which increased costs for certifications, training, and physicals for personnel. As you know, as you get more personnel, there's more costs that come with each person. And then also... And then also fuel costs also increased to support the continued increase in emergency calls. And I'm sure as you all are always expecting the rise of fuel costs. Under insurances, this category increased by fifteen thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars or twelve point two two percent. While the categories did see a decrease in areas of accidental death and sickness, li- uh life insurance and workers' cop insurance, we did have a significant increase in employee health insurance. As you know, as you get more full-time equivalents, then you have to have health insurance. So we are finding that as we increase the number of hours of our employees, that we're also having to increase our health insurance. Liability and interest, this category increased by seventy-two thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars or twelve point eight four percent. Again, this is increased due to the additional loan for the loan for the land for the second station. And then under capital improvements, this category increased by hundred and fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars or fifty-two point five nine percent. The E S D has completed a five-year capital improvement plan and the budgeted amount is to support the purchases laid out in this plan. So this leads us to our budget year comparison. This kind of shows you what our debt service was last year to this year, which is a thirteen point zero seven percent increase. Our which is the I N S, the operating, which is the M and O, increased twelve point six nine percent. This year, um with the tax revenue increase, we did not require any money from our reserve account to float our operating or debt service. So you'll see that decreased obviously by a hundred percent. The income or Fire Marshal contribution, we also took a lot more money from that um those areas. In previous year, income can also be anything, for example, we sold vehicles at auction. It can be, we do open records requests, um different trainings, those types of things. And then the Fire Marshal contribution, that is money that comes from the revenue-based account in the Fire Marshal's office to cover salaries and that type of thing. So as his revenue goes up, we can also um have his office become more self-sustaining. So that increase was sixty-seven point seven three percent. So again, that also offset the amount we we had to take um in the previous year from reserve for our operating. Capital improvement, we increased it by fifty-two point five nine percent. Again, we have a lot of capital um projects that we're looking to do in the next year again to support the growth. So our total budgeted amount increased by ten point seven seven percent. And our Fire Marshal's budget, which again comes from a revenue-based um account, increased forty-nine point zero three percent. And mostly because again, he has a lot more business that's occurring, he has uh more salaries, and he also is now in need of vehicles to um to support his uh his extra staff. So our reserve balance last year, again, um based on our operating um amount was fifty-two point two six percent. Well, so with our budgeted amount this year, our reserve balance will be thirty-four point nine nine percent. So our reserve balance decreased twenty-four point five three percent. So on the tax rate, this shows you um at the collection of the E T R rate, what it was last year and what it would be, what our E T R is this year. So last year's E T R, the current year we're in, is point zero nine seven three five three. Our E T R rate for the seventeen eighteen year is coming out at point zero nine two two seven one, which would still provide an increase of seven point one eight percent. Now, um we also are in a different situation this year. Our rollback rate has always been over ten cents. Um obviously, I I know everybody's taxes this year has done this yo-yo effect. So this year, our rollback rate is actually under ten cents, which is point zero nine nine four six eight, which would be um if we went from the E T R this year to the rollback um in the seventeen eighteen year, would increase our income by fourteen point nine two percent. I will tell you that we're doing public hearings, um our posting will come out on Thursday, and the board is strongly considering um adopting the rollback rate, again, pending all of our public hearings. So if we go from the.
Can I hold hold a pause right there for a second? So the rollback rate, you'll see in the in the middle column there at the bottom, rollback rate generates two point two eight million dollars. So if you look at the debt service component and the operating, that'll total it to two eight one. So in the proposed budget that they have adopted, it is with a rollback tax rate that leaves them with a just under one tenth of one percent under the thirty-five percent fund balance bowl, where the county gets at twenty-five to thirty-five. The one thing that that I caution both districts on is um as that fund balance changes, and like I said, they're they would, under this scenario, utilize about twenty-four percent of their reserves um in F Y eighteen. As they look at at the possibility and feasibility of bringing on station number two, they've got to remember they've got that upper limit on M and O, that the upper limit is ten cents by statute on the tax rate is bring us, they're bringing that station online. It's going to be a delicate balance of of maintaining an adequate reserve because they rely heavily, almost entirely, on property taxes to to fund the uh the district. And it's got to, they've got to have enough in their M and O uh to be able to cover bringing a second station on.
And I'll tell you before we came in even into the budget talks, we had a capital improvement meeting and we talked about all of those um things. And so we we created a um a capital improvement plan. I don't, you know, Wally didn't get you to bring that up, but I think you, it was in the preliminaries, so it was probably already forwarded to the commissioners. So we looked at what what are what are our needs in the next five years. And seeing how we've been negotiating with Hunt, we know that we're looking to build that second station. We have to start vertical construction in the nineteen twenty budget year. So we're already making that planning. And so we're purchasing items that aren't associated with the station that will be um utilized to maintain our current um equipment. And then also we're pre-purchasing, for example, fire trucks and that type of thing to replace some that we have and also for the second station. You know, we are in a situation, and I showed you, you know, population growth and on the map, we are in a situation like Wally said is is that, you know, ten cents is our max, but the growth is quicker than the ten cents. And I think, as you all know as well, while the house goes on the ground today, you won't get that money for a few years. So, you know, we know that we have a lot of challenges in our district. And what we're trying to do is have a gentle balance between how will we still continue to provide um the response time and the staff on a volunteer status and still fund a second station and still, I mean, there's a lot going on in our district and we're doing our best to prepare, you know, based on today, tomorrow. But, you know, the future, as we talked, is um sometimes unpredictable, but. So that gives the portion about the budget year comparison. I did want to mention to you, um this year, we also broke down our reserve balance. So as um Wally mentioned, it would be thirty-four point nine nine percent. And just to give you a rough um idea of what we're breaking the reserve down to is we have um and we our reserve balance is divided into three areas. So our operating reserve, in other words, the reserve amount used for our operating balance would be ten percent of that, which is about a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars. Our emergency response reserve portion of that thirty-five percent is fifteen percent, which is about two hundred and fifty thousand. That would be again for any mass incident that requires funding. And then we also have pledged ten percent of our capital reserve towards future construction or capital improvements. While that seems like a very small portion, our main goal is always fire service. So we always have to make sure we fund that. Just to give you an idea, going from the E T R, which we currently are at, to the rollback rate would increase the taxes to the average home uh buyer by five dollars and seventy-two cents. But again, that still only ranks.
Annually, right?
Yes.
Now, that's that's E T R to rollback.
Yes, that's that's what they're paying in the two thousand sixteen E T R to what they would be paying in the two thousand seventeen rollback rate.
So last year's actual rate was point zero nine seven cents. Last year's home value was a hundred and sixteen forty-one. This year's home value out in the district is a hundred and nineteen five seventy-one. So homes went up by about two point eight one percent in value on the average home. Last year, a home was taxed at a total of a hundred and eleven oh nine. Those same homes taxed this year on a rollback rate that's being proposed would be taxed um.
So why not?
I'm sorry, they were taxed at a hundred and nineteen seventy-five. So the difference between last year's um actual tax rate and this year's proposed tax rate is two dollars and fifty-three cents. So if if as a as a consumer, as a homeowner, what they're looking at, even though she's talking about the difference between effective tax rate and rollback, the the average consumer will see about a two dollar and fifty-three cent increase a year or twenty-one cents a month.
And really what we're looking at is is that, so if the average home buyer for our um owner for a rollback rate is at a hundred and nineteen dollars, that really is almost just one one nine-one-one call to their house. Because by the time we pay the staff, the fuel, the nine-one-one dispatching services, sometimes if we have two calls going on at one time, so one nine-one-one call to their house can cost a hundred and nineteen dollars. So we think that that really is a bargain for nine-one-one quality nine-one-one calls that they are receiving very similar in the city of El Paso at a much higher tax rate. So we're very proud that we're still providing a very quality um service at such a minimal cost to our um constituents. I also want, um the fire chief is gonna sum up um some of why our budget, what it's driven by and what changes we've made and what uh challenges we still face.
So we understand that the A B Cs of accounting should be applied and that the means where the money is or the highest costs are incurred have the highest potential of overall cost reduction. We have reviewed and made cuts to the budget being proposed. We have prioritized our goals and have provided a sound budget, successful operation of the department. The fire service workload may be small, but the E M S is low workload is large and is our largest request for service. The people we serve request, we expect a response and the Paso County E S number one Horizon Fire Department provide that service. Any more cuts to the budget may affect those services and affect our response. You don't know how many times I've heard, I thought you guys were Paso Fire Department, or I didn't know you all were volunteers. I think we all forget some of that sometimes, that we are volunteers. Some of the E M S challenges we have is medical prevention. We have participated in health fairs to the community and have gone as far as giving immunization with the assistance of the health department and the Paso Fire Department. Stabilizing the patient was one of our focuses as part of the strategic plan and is why we initiated A L S care, Advanced Life Support Program for our community. We have also offered, started offering C P R courses for the community when requested. Some of the fire challenges we face are fire prevention, so we adopted and enforced the code. Early detection and reporting was another challenge. So we incurred smoke detectors and fire alarms and we even went so far as to providing smoke detectors for those who needed them. Early suppression was another challenge. So we adopted codes that require fire extinguishers and automatic speech systems. When people need rescue, we instituted instituted rapid response vehicles and a heavy rescue vehicle or truck. To stop the fire spread, we instituted twenty-four hour coverage with volunteer staffing, where the only department in the county that provides twenty-four hour coverage was strictly volunteers. Since the implementation of this program, we have not missed a call due to lack of personnel. Response time for the fir- first firefighters with some extinguishment capability is critical to the overall success of a fire-related incident. We are doing more with less and we all know that staffing takes a large percentage of the budget. Again, keeping that in mind, we are all still volunteers. We have volunteer group that makes up fifty-five members on the operations side. Now, they don't, they do not all go to every call. We run an average of two firefighters up to three firefighters when shifts allow. Large incidents may require more people and then on average, we have an additional fifteen respond to these types of incidents. And this does not include automatic aid sent from neighboring departments and additional backfill. Additional firefighters, backfill means additional firefighters to cover the firefighters who are responding to other calls. So of those fifty-five, we have seven officers who manage different aspects of the job, again, as volunteers. One of the terms I have heard used many times is we are staffing for the worst-case scenario. We may come up with what we think is the worst-case scenario, but there is always going to be something worse than what we planned for. We plan for what we know, and that is the district is growing, call volume is going up and the types of calls are becoming more complex. Response times are increasing, frequency of calls is also increasing. Keeping that in mind, we are planning for what we have done yesterday and today and not for what may happen tomorrow. The second fire station we're proposing would pick up a workload of more than two hundred calls a year in the immediate response district five mile radius and assist with more than six hundred and thirty-two overlapping calls. A lot of times, we have more than one call come out, we only have one crew at station, so we have volunteers that come up to cover those calls. In this case here, by having that second station, that would assist with those six hundred and thirty-two additional calls where we have more than one call come out at one time. Response times would decrease and within with the placement of a ladder truck and quick response vehicle at that station, we will satisfy the requirement to possibly receive an I S O rating of one. We are currently an I S O rating of two. The rating of a two has saved the people we serve about thirty-four percent in insurance premiums. For the average home, this is, that is a couple hundred dollars. We have worked hard to budget for this addition as we have allocated funds for this project. In the future, as part of our strategic plan, we hope to move to a combination combination department. We understand that more is not always better and I can tell you firsthand, as we evolve, operation gets more difficult and takes more time. In summary, many of the goals and measurable outcomes come from daily, weekly, monthly and annual reports. We use trends as a measurable means to reflect why we request funds and address needs that are included in the budget years request. We have assigned a captain to work on the analytics regularly so that the goals of the department can be achieved. We have many tough decisions that have been made presently and in the past, more to come in the future. In the end, the budget that we are requesting is necessary for the needed operations. With your approval of the budget, we can accomplish a common goal and that is providing the best service we can to the people we serve.
Excellent, well, thank you. That was a really helpful PowerPoint. Um I appreciated have you laid out the the data on the PowerPoint, so thank you very much. Commissioners, do you all have questions?
Commissioners? And I agree with you, just very good presentation.
Thank you.
I've got a couple of questions. If you go back to slide number eleven, where it's uh indicating where your new station is targeted to go, where is that in relation to your current station?
So our current station, let me go back to this slide, Chief, will you assist in where our current station is?
The right, the white, right east, okay.
I'm gonna let the chief do this justice.
So our current station is right here. This is the big warehouse, the cause of our our station currently, the White Building here, and it's on Linda and Darrington. Our proposed station, uh if you want to go to that slide, it's awesome, go back.
Go forward.
So in this map, we can pass a little better. Our station is kind of off to the side over here. Our proposed station would be off of Paso del Este and Mission Ridge, which is approximately six miles, six point two five miles away from our uh current station. Road miles, that is, not as the crow flies, but road miles. And that's what I S O considers um their, when they say five mile radius, it isn't a straight line. It's getting to the address is what they consider five mile radius.
And and I've got one more question. And and insofar as transports on emergency cases, you all transport the patients yourselves.
We don't transport.
We have a private service, which is Life Ambulance, who is currently contracted with the with the county.
So Life does all the emergency, not only.
We first respond for them, stabilize everything until they get there. Life only has what, three ambulances in our other county.
No, we do, we do have situations where our firefighters do third ride if it's a serious condition or there's multiple patients. We will send um some of our paramedics or basics to ride with Life Ambulance to the to the um hospitals to assist with patient care. So it's kind of a twofold.
But for the main main part, it's usually Life Ambulance.
It is, that is.
It is.
Yes.
Yeah, always Life. About nine percent of the time is Life Ambulance. There are times, very rare, when system status does not allow them, they're so busy, we bring in a passive fire, a rescue unit to come in and transport the patient. But that's very few and far between. But currently, right now, Life Ambulance has two units in our district and they cover or respond to our area.
Thank you.
I have a question too.
Commissioner?
Um what happens if El Paso moves their uh annexes some of these American states, East Lake estates and things? Do you guys still cover it or would El Paso be a turn?
They have to notify us first before they do. There's a whole bunch of stuff in the law that says that they have to notify us, they have to take over services for that area. We get the tax money for a certain period of time. There's just a whole bunch of stuff laid out in the law.
When we looked where our second station was, we were very cognizant of that issue. As you know, there's a lot of annexation by the city of El Paso. Um we have not seen as much. In fact, um when I showed you square mileage, we used to be a hundred and fifty-six square miles. So that just attests to how much has, although E S D two, I think, has seen much more annexation. But we are very clo- careful in positioning our station to avoid any of the E T J areas, so we just.
I'll also tell you, I got a map, this is probably four or five years ago, that showed the city's ten-year plan for annexation. It does not include us, it's mostly going out Mottwood and going out Montana.
I'm just kidding, my fear is, I mean, you're not that far from the city line and.
The other.
Like a five-year-old ten-year plan.
The other thing we did is, we, not to interrupt, I'm sorry, we placed our station where there are several muds. And as you know, in that area, there are ten or twelve different muds. So it becomes difficult to annex that area because of the number of muds in that area. So we're also very careful in um.
To to at that, the the city of El Paso likely never annex those areas because they they're they're independent taxing entities with debt. The the city would have to uh pay off uh the the all of the debt infrastructure for those areas. But that's why the developers in those areas set up muds precisely so the fact that they don't have to go through the city's process, they can just develop and then tax the residents uh the municipal utility district.
And those and those muds are running with some pretty high taxes, like the fifty cent range, no?
So so that's why in the city's ten-year plan, the the rate of growth is actually within the E S D two area where they're going along on the Montana corridor where our where our jail is located and then all the way to Montana Vista. But this area will likely never be annexed.
Okay, other questions? Okay, Wally, anything you want to add?
No, just, we attend their meetings regularly, we get invited to their strategic planning sessions. We did, we did board training a couple of weeks ago on budget unbalance and tax rates and we got a real good exchange of information. As we were presenting, you know, Kathleen would tie in with, and this ties to this statement that you get on a monthly basis. And I'm just trying to provide via a resource as much as possible to the, to the board members and the staffs.
Great, well, thank you all for your collaboration with our budget team and our administration, we really appreciate it.
Well, we appreciate their assistance as well. Thank you very much.
And again, thanks for the very helpful presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, have a great day.
Thank you.
Josh, do you want to take just a couple of minutes recess real fast in between, if that's all right?
Sure, yeah, if you wanted to, 10 minutes?
Yeah, my wife and me.
Oh, awesome, okay, 10-minute break, thanks, Josh.
I have to tell you that my daughter, I'll be.
Or about 9:45, let's start back up at 10.
10:45, thank you, Josh.
Okay, good morning. Commissioner's Corner is a convenient special open session.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, commissioners. I am the administrative, administrator, I was going to say my past, my past position. I am the administrator for the El Paso County Emergency Services District Number Two. My name is Mariana Navarrete. And this is the Fire Marshal Roger Esparza. Welcome, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner.
As you may know, the El Paso County ESD Number Two was established in 1987 and services the communities of El Paso County. The areas of Anthony, Tanudillo, Clint, Favens, Montana Vista, San Elisario, Socorro, Tornillo, Vinton, and unincorporated areas within our district. We protect and educate the citizens of El Paso County by enforcing fire codes, conducting fire investigations, and providing emergency medical services. The El Paso County ESD Number Two has six fire departments and a fire marshal division. The fire departments are the Clint Fire Department, Favens Fire Department, Fire Marshal Division, Montana Vista, San Elisario, Socorro Fire Department, and the West Valley Fire Department. We support these six volunteer fire departments, the Fire Marshal Division, 13 fire stations, 167 response admin vehicles, and about 200 volunteer firefighters. The El Paso County Emergency Services District has currently 28 employees. Bless you. Excuse me. Bless you. This consists of the district administrator, two administrative assistants, four field administrative assistants, the fire marshal, four deputy fire marshals, 13 firefighters, one custodian, one facility maintenance, and one mechanic. Some of our highlights for this year, 2016, 2017, seen in the picture is actually our new pumper that is coming in sometime before the year is over. Chief Esparza and our president, Mr. Santana, will be heading out to Florida next week to view the final truck. Check it out and.
They'll actually be conducting a final inspection and make sure that it meets all the specs that the district purchased.
This year, also Chief Esparza has been working on a training facility that is going to be located behind the Socorro Fire Department, which will be used by both paid, our paid staff and the volunteer fire departments.
The district is currently venturing into having its very own training academy that will provide all the volunteers the required training to allow them to become Texas Commission on Fire Protection firefighters, which will entice more volunteers to come to the district and will also give them the opportunity that if they choose to apply for the El Paso Fire Department as well.
Also, I didn't mention in here, we also, this year, our commissioners approved a cancer insurance for our volunteer fire departments. It was also approved for our employees, but our employees are actually paying the cost for that cancer, which roughly costs about $11 per month. And for the volunteers, it's at no cost. This is the fire department, incident count by department, for one year, from July 1st of 2017. from July first of 2016 to July first of 2017. This report includes all sorts of, all the calls that are registered in that report, which is rescue and emergency, hazardous condition, service call, good intent call, false alarm and false calls, severe weather and natural disasters, special incident type, fires, overpressure rupture, explosion, overheat. As you can tell, most of our, our most busiest stations are the West Valley Fire Department and the Socorro Fire Department. They're both at the twenty-one percent. The Montana Vista came in seventeen percent. The Favens Fire Department came in the sixteen percent. Clint thirteen percent, and San Elisario twelve percent. The fire department's average response times, these are minutes and seconds. As you can see, the Clint is at eight minutes and fifty-three seconds. Favens Fire Department at eight minutes and twenty-two seconds. Montana Vista, seven minutes and thirty-seven seconds. San Elisario, seven minutes and forty-four. Socorro, eight and fifty. West Valley, eight with twenty-six. Our budget estimated revenue for this next fiscal year, the 2017, 2018. Our average home value for 2016 for the ESD Number Two was at seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine dollars. The average 2017 home value went up to eighty-two thousand six hundred and nine. This year's 2017 property tax rates. Last year's our total effective was the point zero nine four nine five. Our, this year's effective tax rate is point zero nine two three four nine. This year's rollback rate is the point zero nine two four five three. Estimated revenue from code enforcement is at one percent. Estimated to receive fifty-seven thousand two ninety-eight. Grants, that kind of goes up and down. It's not a given that we might, we might get some grants this year and we might not, so we estimated about five thousand dollars in grants. Our estimated revenue for property taxes at forty-two percent. And we are using four percent of our reserve funds this year. We are estimating to receive in sales tax of fifty-three percent. Any questions? This year, our special projects total amount is in the eight-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand nine-hundred-and-seventeen dollars, which went, had an increase of thirty-eight percent. Last year, we only budgeted our fire truck and the equipment for it as a capital improvement, as a capital project. Everything else, we actually cut one million dollars, right, Wally? It was about one million dollars in special projects last year. So this year, there is an increase of thirty-eight percent.
I guess the biggest component on this year's capital is plans to do another pumper?
Yes, sir. We're doing one a year for, till we replace the current fleet of fire trucks. We're, we have a plan to replace them every twenty years. By the time we go on the next go-around, the truck that we currently purchase will already be about ten years old. And then that will become a reserve for a different station, and we'll get another one in. And we have a system of replacing the big fire trucks.
So that's a little bit of what department has special projects. This is a little bit of a graph of the loans by department. The district only has a one percent of debt. The Clint Fire Department has fifteen percent. Favens has fifteen percent, Montana sixteen, San Elisario thirteen percent. And the Socorro is twenty-seven, and West Valley is thirteen percent. This year, we actually paid off one of our loans, which decreased our debt by one percent. This year also, in December for the new fiscal year, we're actually paying off another loan for the West Valley Fire Department, which will decrease our debt. This is a little bit of a budget expenditures by department. As you can see, the district holds most of the budget. It's at seventy-eight percent. The reason why you see this is the district has taken over all the vehicle repairs, building maintenance, computer, major purchases. Also, they have taken over the PPE, which if a department is in need of personal protective equipment, they actually request it to the district office, and then we go ahead and go out for the quotes and submit them to our commissioners for approval.
Did those commissioners, it streamlines the way that departments used to be doing of purchasing of personal protective equipment. It, it actually takes it away from them and puts it on us to review. The fact that we're not just buying equipment because we can't. We're actually reviewing to ensure that the equipment that we are replacing is because we need it. We're having annual tests by an independent contractor that reviews all our personal protective equipment to make sure that it meets the NFPA standards, and if it doesn't, we replace it.
And this is working in every vehicle repair maintenance, as I was mentioning. Back, I guess, a few years ago, it was each department's responsibility to take care of those repairs. Now, it's the district's job, and we're overseeing, making sure that the repairs are being completed, they're being done, and quotes are being provided before we approve those purchases. Before they would take it to any vendor and say, "Just do it." And not really looking for better prices, better deals, especially for these trucks that really need to be ready to go for any emergency calls. There is an increase of twenty-two percent for our vehicle repair maintenance. That's about a thirty-five thousand dollars increase. We did hire a mechanic, which he has been exceptional. He has been, when did he start, in November?
December.
December. We had him actually do a full inventory on all of our fleet, oil change, everything that is required for our trucks. And it's actually, it looks like we're spending more right now, but it's because we're buying, before we didn't have to stock up on fluid, on items like that. So now we're doing, since we're doing the repairs, I mean, not just doing those repairs, now it did go a little bit. Hopefully, with time, we will see that, kind of having a more, how do I say?
A balancing.
A balanced number, yeah.
More cost effective. Did you also end up doing the interlocal with ESD One?
Not yet.
Not yet, okay, they're, they're working right now.
We're gonna be working.
On working on an interlocal with ESD One where their mechanic may provide services.
What the mechanic is gonna encompass is the day-to-day operations along with the facilities maintenance. We were spending a lot of money on getting companies that charge us just to travel to our locations to give us estimates for a very minute repair, say, a water leak or a leaky faucet. So that's why we encompass the facilities maintenance and the mechanic to be able to encompass the day-to-day operation of the fleet. If it can be fixed by us very quickly, that's what he, that's what he's doing. We only have one mechanic, one facility, so it's very important for us to have somebody that can maintain the fleet.
So this is why most of our, the budget is under the district's office, is we're taking over a lot of the responsibility that the departments used to have. And then you'll see a decrease in the department's budget because of those reasons. The vehicle, they only have about two thousand dollars in vehicle repair maintenance on their budget, which is to purchase little things like light bulbs, windshield wipers, things that they don't really need approval because it's not a major repair on the truck. This is more of a budget expenditures that I did based on some of the big amounts of expense accounts we have. Our salaries, payroll, taxes, and pensions are at thirty-one percent. The salaries did increase.
And the worksheet she's reading now, the district commissioners, is the, is the last worksheet I sent you this morning. So it's got the comparative seventeen to eighteen's out there.
Yeah, it has the differences and the percentages. Salaries went up by fifteen percent. The reason for this, commissioners, our firefighters are on a new schedule. This year, they are, we used to budget two thousand and eighty hours for payroll for everybody, but per our, the approved commissioners, the firefighters received an extra hour to their shift every day. So now they, instead of working an eight-hour shift, they work a full nine with no lunch. Lunch is included in it. So there is a little bit of an increase in salary. Plus, we are providing a three percent salary increase to our employees, cost of living. And that is at thirty-one percent for the salaries. Our next is our operational, which is utilities, supplies, those types of items, at twenty-six percent. Professional fees, which include our accounting fees, appraisal district fees, consulting fees, our dispatching services, which that is, actually, we saw a decrease in dispatching services by two percent. Last year, it was at three-hundred-and-thirty-eight thousand. This year, it's at three-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand. So that is in the section of the professional fees at eighteen percent. Insurances, we pay about eleven percent. Vehicle repairs and maintenance, four percent. Personal protective equipment, three percent, which is a hundred-and-twenty thousand budgeted this year for next year. Training and fire prevention at three percent. Contingencies, two percent. And vehicle repairs and maintenance at two percent. The overall budget, oh, it didn't come out. It's weird.
We've had that problem. It's our, it's our system, I apologize. But the one that Commissioners Court sees on their screen has a dollar.
The special projects at thirteen percent.
Sorry, Judge.
I'll give you the amounts, please.
Chris is still listening.
The special projects total is eight-hundred-and-ninety-six thousand nine-hundred-and-seventeen, at thirteen percent. Our debt services is at one million seven-hundred-and-ninety-three, two-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars. That's a twenty-five percent. And our overall expense is at four million four-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand eighty, and that's at sixty-two percent.
Now, if you take a hard pause there, one of those discussion points we had last year, last year, last, seems like a year ago, last week, with the board during the, during the discussion and training, was one thing they need to just be aware of going into the future, both short term and long term, is their effective tax rate is at nine and a quarter cents. Five and a half cents of that is paying for debt for the district. The other three-point-seven cents is paying for maintenance and operation. They do have the benefit of about three-point-eight million dollars worth of sales tax, which helps offset the cost of the district. But as I was letting them know, as they plan their future capital needs, as they're paying down debt, with the amortization schedule going out for the next, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years, they need to be aware of when they're going out for those future loans or any, any capital improvements or capital equipment. They need to be conscientious of that ratio of debt to M and L, because once they hit that hard cap of ten cents, they might, they might eat into the, the maintenance and operation portion. So in talking to the board members, they're, we're gonna plan another session later this year to talk about just looking at that long-term debt and, and making sure that as they're projecting the needs for roofs, pumper replacements, and strategic planning as we take, we keep that INS rate for debt management in the back of our heads, so they don't run into a maintenance operation issue, so.
Below that, I put a little bit of the reserve fund balance that we spoke about last week, myself from Wally to the commissioners. We have an estimated amount to of roughly three-point-five million dollars, which is about sixty-six percent in reserves at the end of this fiscal year. In order to balance our budget for next year, we will be using roughly about four percent by percent, which is about two-hundred-and-seventy thousand seven-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars. This will drop our reserves to sixty-one percent. And our final presentation, it's the strategic planning, which is what we were discussing about having this with our commissioners to use some of our reserves for that strategic planning that we have for the next five years. We are committed to protect and educate our citizens with the county. In doing so, our goal is to invest in new capital facilities, maintain the upkeep of our existing fire departments and training facilities, and provide our members with reliable rescue units that will meet the needs of our constituents and growing population. Some of our capital facility and capital improvements I have here are for the district office. We would like to purchase land and building office instead of leasing. We currently are leasing where we are. The Clint Fire Department needs replacing roof at Station Number Three, and we would like to demolish and rebuild Station Number Two, correct?
Number one.
Number one. The Favens Fire Department, we would also like to build offices for that station. That station has no offices in none of their departments. They have a total of three, which is the substation including in Tornillo. That only has one office. And the rest have no offices for any of the chiefs or any of their members. The San Elisario Fire Department, we would also like to purchase land and build a substation. The same for the Socorro Fire Department, and also replace the roof in the current station they are. And Montana Vista, we would like to bring water and natural gas to the main station. And the West Valley Fire Department would also like to have a training pad and replace the roof. Fleet replacement and disposal policy, disposal policy. All small rescue vehicles should be replaced when they reach ten years of service or a hundred thousand miles, whichever comes first. There may be circumstances in which vehicles may be, may be replaced sooner. The, the district office will provide feedback when replacing the fleet. The district may or may not replace all the vehicles all departments have on a one-for-one basis. We also would like to replace, as Chief Esparza was mentioning, our large fleet, pumpers, tankers, rescues, brush trucks, and quints. Also, the radio upgrade. Some of our, our current XTS twenty-five-hundred radios will be obsolete by 2019. Each radio costs about four thousand or six thousand dollars. So we do need to start planning to replace all of our portable radios and mobile stations. Any questions, commissioners?
Thank you so much for that presentation, appreciate it. Commissioners, any questions?
ESD One provided a, the, the number, the population that they serve, do you all have a rough idea of roughly the population that you serve, how many years?
It's about a hundred and thirty thousand in our, in our.
Yeah, it is about a hundred and thirty thousand. I didn't correct it in the beginning, sorry.
Okay, and then, so when, when looking at capitals, like the Socorro, of building a substation in Socorro, I guess you all have an analysis that, because the ESD Two is serving a population of approximately fifty-six thousand, and they're looking at, it's pretty sparse and pretty spread out. Socorro is roughly twenty-eight thousand.
Thirty-two thousand square, thirty-two thousand, thirty-two thousand square miles, thirty-two thousand population.
How many square mile?
It's three thousand two hundred square miles. With Socorro, yes.
It's larger than our county, but.
No, it's not.
No, the county's a hundred and a thousand square miles.
Give me one minute.
Three hundred and twenty square.
Thirty-two square miles, I'm sorry, thirty-two square miles. And thirty-two thousand population.
And so, I guess you all, in, in looking at these capital improvements, have, I guess, done an analysis of similar to.
It's the distance that we have in Socorro, Socorro, and in Clint, we have a problem of the train. The train is in the middle of the city of Socorro, and it's also in Clint, that stops us from where the fire station's at. So we need to create a fire station on the south side of the train tracks in case there is an emergency, because we've been delayed by, by quite a bit of time because of the train, when it stopped.
Okay.
Plus, it's part of the ISO requirements that we have a fire station within so many miles of a populous.
And, because looking at your, your all's debt slide, I mean, and showing that Socorro has the largest amount of, of debt, and then now that you're, you're looking at adding an additional substation, I mean, is it just that there was previously, there wasn't a capital plan in place, that that's what it did Socorro, that Socorro needed?
What we're, what we're gonna look to encompass is that fire station is actually gonna serve two purposes. One, to serve for Socorro, and also gonna be serving, yes, for San Elisario. We plan to place it in a, in a strategic area where it serves both, both communities.
Yes, Socorro did its four-hundred-and-seventy-eight thousand of the total one eight next year.
Also, commissioners, next week on our Wednesday's meeting, I will be hopefully adopting a tax rate of the effective. Our commissioners, we did the comparison between the effective and the rollback, and the only difference was gonna be three thousand three-hundred-and-sixty-eight dollars. It was gonna cost us about two thousand to do the publication. It was going to cost us about two thousand to do the publications and the newspaper, and the meetings, and staffing over time. So they have decided, the budget is, that we presented to you all is based on the effective tax rate, and we are receiving permanent property taxes.
What's, so what's the, the cost to the average homeowner? Just the rate increased?
So their current tax rate is point zero nine seven three. Is their current tax rate? The proposed tax rate that the board is considering of the...
That was point zero nine four nine?
No, it's point zero nine four five three.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are you looking at...
I'm looking around the picture. Sorry, okay. Zero nine four five. Their current effective tax rate is point zero nine two three. So if the homeowner's values didn't change, their taxes would go down. But the tax value, I think in your first slide, did you show the average home?
Average last year, 2016, was seventy-nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-nine, and the 2017 is eighty-two thousand six nine.
So they also had about a, just under a three percent property value change, but it was less... If their values went up with a new tax rate, it was less than a dollar, their taxes would change. I can get an exact count.
Less than a dollar a year?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions?
I also had a question. You said you were going to give a two percent call-in?
A three percent for our employees?
Yes, a three percent call-in. Why three percent if the CPI was like one point six percent?
We give a three percent every year, which hasn't changed for the last two years.
So you don't do a merit program? You don't do steps? They do one salary change only?
They all, we all get the same salary change. Other questions, Commissioners? No? Any other questions? Okay, thank you so much. Really appreciate your time here with us this morning. Have a good day.
Thank you so much.
Have a good day.
I may, five-minute break to transition.
Sure. Let's do a five-minute recess.
Thank you.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public and are available twenty-four hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. Roden Bridge Fabens Warehouse, thirteen thirty-one North Fabens Street, Fabens, Texas, seven nine eight three eight. Roden Bridge Conithio Warehouse, one ninety-one Conithio Avenue, Conithio, Texas, seven nine eight three five. Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse, one forty-six ninety-eight Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, seven nine nine three eight. You can now watch Commissioners Court meetings on YouTube. Go to youtube.com and search for El Paso County Commissioners or El Paso County, Texas. Subscribe to our channels to see our latest videos.
Did you know that the County of El Paso's fixed asset control and inventory disposal is handled through the purchasing department? Throughout the course of each business year, the county holds live public auctions to dispose of aged equipment, vehicles, furniture, and other items that are no longer needed. To find out about upcoming auctions or to learn more about the county's inventory disposal process, contact the purchasing department at telephone number nine one five five four six two zero four eight. Commissioner Andrew Hagerty would like to invite you to his weekly breakfast meeting that takes place every Wednesday at seven thirty AM at Danny's Diner, located at forty-six ninety Trans Mountain Road. Every week he has a different speaker who will be discussing topics of interest for the community. So if you live in the northeast, west side, or anywhere else in the county, come and join us for the breakfast meeting. The three forty-six District Court Judge Angie Juarez Barred started the El Paso Veterans Treatment Court Program in 2012 for veterans and active service members that have been arrested and charged with a felony or misdemeanor criminal offense. To be considered for the specialty court, the statutory criteria includes be a veteran or current member of the United States Armed Forces, including a member of the reserves, National Guard, or State Guard, and suffer from a brain injury, mental illness, or mental disorder, including PTSD, or be a victim of military sexual trauma, all occurring or resulting from military service. Call Sylvia Serna, Veterans Program Director, at nine one five five four six two one one nine, or email her at scerna@epcounty.com for any information. Did you know that you can save money on the cost of your medications? And doing so is easy. In 2015, the County of El Paso launched a prescription discount card program from coast to coast. The cards are available to all El Paso County residents free of charge, and everyone qualifies. You can pick up a card at any county office location, Walgreens, Walmart, CVS, or Target pharmacies, or simply print the card at www.coastthenumbertwocoastrx.com. Happy savings. Financial Recovery is a division under the Budget and Fiscal Policy Department. The Financial Recovery Division regains monies from those who have exhausted resources throughout the judicial process. The authorization for the recovery of spent resources is by court order. These are resources initially funded by taxpayers. Financial Recovery Division's goal is to assist in making the county and taxpayers whole by replenishing funds into the budget to optimize services to the public. For more information, please visit the El Paso County website. As a reminder from the Information Technology Department, please don't save critical or sensitive data on your desktop. Instead, best practices is to save your data to your user allocated home drive. This drive has safeguards preventing data loss. Again, this is an information technology-friendly reminder. Did you know the County of El Paso's purchasing department is responsible for ensuring that all items and services needed by various county departments are purchased in the matter required by the state of Texas? Whether through formal sealed bids or smaller dollar quotations, the county purchasing team is dedicated to finding the best contracting return on your taxpayer dollars. Additionally, the purchasing department is responsible for the tracking of inventory within the county and properly disposing surplus to public auctions. For questions about how to become a vendor and compete for county contracts, or to learn more about public auctions, please contact us at telephone number nine one five five four six two zero four eight.
The County of El Paso Public Works Department is offering sandbags at no cost or requirements to the public and are available twenty-four hours a day. The location of the county facilities are the following. Roden Bridge Fabens Warehouse, thirteen thirty-one North Fabens Street, Fabens, Texas, seven nine eight three eight. Roden Bridge Conithio Warehouse, one ninety-one Conithio Avenue, Conithio, Texas, seven nine eight three five. Roden Bridge Montana Warehouse, one forty-six ninety-eight Van Lane, El Paso, Texas, seven nine nine three eight.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners Court has reconvened into special open session.
Okay, Judge, Commissioners, we're now going to go through a public works organizational structure assessment and some recommendations. I've emailed this to you all, as well as the spreadsheets I'm using in the presentation. So we're going to just go over a little bit of the history, discuss this being the initial phase of the assessment, go over the current organizational structure, active projects, comparisons to some other counties, some recommendations, the cost impact, and then any feedback you all have.
When did you send it to you?
I sent it just about ten thirteen AM. Thank you.
So both in strategic planning, FY sixteen and FY eighteen, Commissioners Court made public works assessment and reorganization a top priority for management. And it's an action item for this coming fiscal year. However, because of the trouble I've had and experienced with conducting the recruitments, I wanted to go ahead and move at least a portion of this assessment, excuse me, a portion of this assessment up to now, so we could consider it during the budget. So the, we have conducted recruitment efforts for a public works director at least two times in the last three to four years. I don't know if you remember, but at the time, we had brought Pat on as an interim public works director. We were actually in the middle of a recruitment for a public works director. By the time we had looked at the final candidates, my predecessor worked out with Pat to go ahead and stay on. And part of what was motivating that was the candidate poll we had. Then I recently conducted a public works director recruitment. And throughout that recruitment, what I found is the skill sets that where we were needing expertise are so wide and varied that I, it made me question the organizational structure again for the department. We did design this current structure, I want to say it was back in about 2010, 2011, to place multiple high-demand functions under one department head. Back then, what we did is we were in the process of creating what we called super departments. And we created a super department for public works. And what we did is basically, at the time, and I was in HR at the time, we established this structure by saying, we're going to create this super department, and we placed a lot of functions in there. And what, the main change we made was to the department head and the assistant department head of public works. We recreated their positions and added a lot of duties to them. But the underlying structure, what we did, we actually decreased some of the underlying support structure. We had a facilities director. We eliminated that position and just used a couple of existing positions to try to help support that level. We also took some other positions we had and either eliminated or didn't, didn't, we didn't dive deep into each area of the organization at that time. And I think we would have eventually got there, but we haven't had enough stability to get there. I'll give you an example why I think we would have eventually got there is that Pat was starting to analyze each area of the department before she left. And she had started forming the structure similar to what I'm going to show you all as a recommendation. But we started focusing on certain areas where, like, this is what we need in parks. And we brought back recommendations. So I just wanted to give you some of that background about the current structure, because I feel like we were not complete in finalizing the design of the super department. And looking back from a, from an HR perspective... I think it was a learning experience to look at each area in the department. And that's why I'll tell you, I feel like this is the initial phase of the assessment. I wanted to get this one done because I need some additional subject matter expertise to get in and assess each one of these areas. So this is at the department division level at a leadership executive level for each of these divisions. We need to evaluate staffing, budgets, functions, and processes to make sure are we doing what we're supposed to be doing or what we need to be doing? And are we doing it efficiently? And how are we comparing at a staffing level? Is it reasonable? So currently, this is the current structure of the department. It's a $35 million budget, $35.7 million budget for FY17. There's a total of 34 different funds underneath this department, not including capital projects. There's 263 regular employees and plus or minus 30 seasonal employees. There's 60 active major projects, and this has probably changed even since Public Works presented in the last couple of weeks. And they're responsible for over 25% of the county's strategic action plan items. I'm now going to go through these major active projects. These I've taken from Norma's slides that she presented to you all the first week that we did budget overview, department overviews. And there are over 60 active projects. And I want you to have access to them so you can see the type of work this department is currently responsible for. So then next I went to the comparison of other counties and how they've structured their Public Works departments. And I will tell you, it's very difficult to compare. You're not comparing apples to apples. So when you contact these departments and you say, "We want to evaluate what you have in Public Works," each one does things differently, and so they don't always include, "We have to like dig harder and further." And somehow that I've even had to go beyond talking to somebody there and actually research on their websites. Someone leaves out onsite sewage, but they have it, but it's over in the Health Department. And so they don't view it as a function of Public Works. But we went through, and like in Barrett County, they have five departments that do basically what we're doing in our one department. And plus their GIS function is in a sixth department because it's located under ITD. Cameron County has three departments. And one of them, the Transportation Division, has multiple divisions, including different directors in that Transportation Division.
Betsy, how big is their department?
I have a slide that shows how their population and their budgets for just the Roden Bridge Division. But I don't have it for how much is in facilities, how much is in parks and rec. I don't have that yet. Collin County, five departments that they've split themselves into. Dallas County has three departments, which I thought was surprising, but I've spoke to the Dallas County manager. And one thing about Dallas County is the majority of the county is incorporated. So he told me that every time that there's any unincorporated areas, they get someone to annex it. And so there's very, very little unincorporated area in the entire county. As a matter of fact, their number of unpaved roads in the county or the amount of roads they maintain in the county is like next to nothing. And you're going to see that on a Roden Bridge slide coming up. They don't even necessarily do like the road maintenance in-house. They contract everything out. It's so minimal. But they have Planning and Development Facilities and a Public Works Department with Engineering, Construction, Property Management, Utility Coordination, Stormwater, GIS, and Transportation Planning, but not the actual maintenance. Denton County has six departments they've divided themselves into. The same functions that we currently have. Planning and Development Facilities, Public Works, GIS, Engineering, and then the Public Health Department that takes care of the onsite sewage facility. They also take care of some other enforcement as well, health, like mosquitoes and stuff like that. Idalco County, they're divided into five departments. Planning and Development Facilities, Public Works, Parks and Rec, and then also the Health Department doing onsite. And Environmental Compliance. Tarrant County, five departments. Again, they have onsite over in the Health Department. They have an Engineering, a Transportation Services, which includes Public Works. And they also include under their Transportation Services, a Garage Management, just like we do. And a fleet under their Transportation. And then Travis County has three departments. However, their Transportation Department has multiple divisions within it, including some directors within that division. So I just pulled some stats on, for example, one division comparison to other counties, to a few of the other counties. So you can see, of course, the population, the square miles of the particular county. And then this is just their Roden Bridge Division, how many staff they have in Roden Bridge. And so like Dallas, for example, where they have none, it is because they contracted all out and almost all of their community is in incorporated areas. I do feel like we need to get into a detailed analysis, as I mentioned, on each of the functional areas. But I need the subject matter expert in place to help us with that. But we need to look at staffing, budget, processes, and functions. So most county organizations have functions split into about five departments. No two counties, of course, are structured alike. Everybody does something a little bit different. Facilities is, across all the counties that I looked at, Facilities is always a separate department. That's one thing that they all did have in common. Public Works is also a common function. Some call it Transportation, some call it Infrastructure. But that is a commonly grouped to form an independent department amongst all the other counties. But it doesn't include everything we've included in ours. Parks and Recreation is commonly an independent department amongst counties that have parks. For example, some counties do not manage parks in their region. They either, it's all like Forest Service or Bureau of Land Management-type places in their community. So but if they do, it's generally a separate department. And then Planning and Development is commonly an independent department amongst the comparative counties. I do want to note that Engineering is often its own department in counties. But we have, we have a limited amount of engineers. And we have, there's three that we use across all divisions. And then there are, there's a couple that we use in specific areas. So I wouldn't recommend we create an Engineering Department, and I'll kind of, I'll go through that in my recommendations. So I think we, I would recommend that we restructure the organization to have four departments with department heads and one executive director that oversees all of them. And then we use existing management vacancies to the greatest extent possible to offset the expense. So in my proposal, I'm imagining we would have a Public Works Executive Director. Underneath the Executive Director would be an Engineering Division, and then four different departments. Planning and Development, Infrastructure Services, which is Roden Bridge and the water, and our water system, and then Parks and Recreation and Facilities. So the proposed structure, the blue are existing positions with no changes. The red are reclassified positions that we currently have, either a vacancy or we have a position. The only one of these positions that is currently filled is the Facilities position. And that is one where we would work with the incumbent to reclassify to the Facilities Director level position. But Parks and Recreation Director, we have a vacancy that we would regrade, reclassify to reach that level. Planning and Development Director, we have a vacancy that we would regrade to reach that level. This Executive Assistant, I'm going to talk about in a couple slides. That's one that was being requested this year in budget regardless of what we do in this structure. And so that's one that's already part of the $1.5 million estimated personnel cost for this fiscal year. And then the Infrastructure Director position. We have a Deputy Director of Roden Bridge. But that area, when I, if you go back to the slides where we're looking at the major projects, and when you look at what goes on in the Roden Bridge or the infrastructure area between our water system, our warehouses, that's where we have the majority of staffing. I believe that both positions are still necessary. So this is a new position, the Infrastructure Director. Then also, as, while I'm saying we need to get in there and do more evaluation, one thing that was glaring to me just during my management overview of what vacancies we have, how we're staffed, you'll see here a Sports Park Operations new position. Because when I look at this overall, there is no one, and this year we've had some issues at the sports park. There are no, there's no one overall managing the entire, the entire facility. There's someone who manages leagues, there's someone who works maintenance. But one, those have to all work together. And there needs to be someone who's overseeing and planning and creating programming, managing the actual clubhouse. That is an area where I feel like we are short-staffed. And then also over here on the planning, I'm calling that a new position, but what I was doing was taking a vacancy and creating basically both of these, the regrade and this other position, because I do think both are necessary to perform the function. So the cost impact for this reorganization for a full fiscal year, it's $99,517 for the majority of it. And this leaves out two of the recommendations that I'm providing you. And I'm going to explain to you why. So the $99,517 for a full fiscal year, there's a savings of $44,000 to the General Fund and a cost impact of $144,000 to the Roden Bridge Fund. And if I go here, I'll actually pull up a little bit better spreadsheet to see. So in here, what I'm proposing is, these are current positions, these are proposed. So I'd be eliminating the Deputy Director of Public Works position. Because now the Public Works Director is going to have a Director level position in each one of those areas. I don't feel like there's a need for a deputy when you have that high-level executive in each one of those areas. So that's a savings. Then the Planning and Development Director position, the Principal Planner, the Facilities Director regrade, the Parks Maintenance. This is a savings we have from a retiree that I was trying to capture in this reorganization. There's no change to this position, but a person retired, and they were higher than entry level. This was when we lost Manny at the park. So I'm trying to capture the savings from his retirement to help offset the cost. And then the Parks and Recreation Director is a regrade of an existing vacancy. So Planning and Development is a vacancy regrade. Facilities Director is a regrade with an incumbent. Parks and Recreation Director is a regrade with a vacancy. So those positions total the impact to the savings of the General Fund of $44,000. And then the positions that are an impact to the Roden Bridge Fund is the Infrastructure Services Director position. This is the Roden Bridge Water System Director level position. So that's the impact there. The net is $99,000. And I do look at it like a net, because as we've heard yesterday, the Roden Bridge Fund is really no longer a special revenue fund. Because we have depleted those funds and moved them basically to the General Fund. So then the other two positions, which, I can go back to my show if you can be just a second. The next two positions that are new positions that I'm recommending are the Executive Assistant and the Sports Park Manager. The Executive Assistant, again, it's included in the $1.5 million. And the Sports Park Manager is just a new position. And that's these two positions at the bottom of the spreadsheet. The Executive Assistant for the Executive Director of Public Works and Sports Park Manager for the Sports Park at $88,000. So those would both be an impact to General Fund. So moving forward, I'm requesting your support for this reorganization in Phase One. I do, again, want to be very clear, there will be additional analysis. I don't know what that could result in. I mean, I do believe we need to compare and look at our staffing numbers. We've heard about the lack of staffing in Roden Bridge to be able to respond in cases of emergency. Is there other, you know, we've talked about, are there other ways that we will need to look into that we could respond in those cases? Whether it's inter-agency agreements, whether it's renting equipment for those times, things of that nature. But we need to continue to phase in improvements, doing a Phase Two assessment at an operational level, better planning, and increasing performance.
Thank you, Betsy.
Thank you, Judge Commissioners.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner?
Betsy, I was looking at the organizational chart. And I see the Sports Park operations, but because of the personnel that are assigned there and the personnel that are assigned in Escarate, you know, with our golf course, is there a like position overseeing Escarate?
We have a golf course pro and we have a golf course superintendent at Escarate, the golf course. There is not a park manager per se. Now, there is staff located at the park that do, like we have a maintenance grounds management there at Escarate, yes.
So we wouldn't be suffering at Escarate without that special position that oversees both the golf side and the lake side?
Well, we're still planning on filling the position that was vacated by Manny, but he only oversees more the maintenance side. I feel like we have adequate leadership there at the park and the lake.
And this is just, it may be able to be plugged in here. When we talk about our flooding season and we spoke about seasonal employees that we have may be assigned to various duties during a certain time of the year, then once the impact, the weather hits El Paso, then they're immediately moved to where we need them. I don't know if this would fit into your plan now or maybe in the future.
I definitely think that's part of the Phase Two assessment. How do we staff during peak periods? Now, last year, actually the year before last, the county, we went through our seasonals. And what we found is our seasonals were staying on all year long. And so we said, okay, so it's not realistic to call them seasonals if they're not seasonals. And at that time, we brought forward a plan to make our park seasonal employees regular employees. So that they're just full-time year-round. So the only area where we have seasonals in the parks area is lifeguards.
Where maybe they would receive some sort of, not the lifeguards, but others that would receive the necessary training to be able to react to those emergency situations?
Okay, any other questions, Commissioner Bittes?
If you go to Slide 22. I guess, I don't know, it would be helpful to know, I mean, not just the county in totality, but the amount of unincorporated areas. Is that some information you have?
So that's information we've requested, but we have not been able to finalize that yet. We have requested the amount of unincorporated areas for each of these counties.
Because that isn't at least one indicator as it pertains to staffing. I mean, you know, if you look at Denton County, that's geographically and population-wise smaller than us. You know, they have a staff that's, what is that, more than 30?
28, larger.
Bigger, larger. I mean, I think that's been an issue that is indicated by the recent floods, you know, and our ability to respond adequately, I think, has been an issue. So I mean, I guess when evaluating, you know, staff, looking at the level of unincorporated areas and staffing levels versus the county as a whole.
Yes, sir.
And Dallas, while I realize that most of it is incorporated, they do have something like 30 cities within their jurisdiction. It's just, it's a fundamentally different structure where they have suburbs and other things where we, you know, we're just, as you mentioned, I mean, no two counties are alike in this sort of. where we, you know, we're just, as you mentioned, I mean, no two counties are alike in this sort of, this one is difficult to compare, just because of the uniqueness of each county and the amount of unincorporated areas.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
So the cost of this regrade is not included in what we're talking about yesterday? Some of it is, but not all of it?
It's on the, it is on the budget register that Wally sent you, but it's, I separated it out from the 1.5. And it's a little bit, let me go actually down here.
The ninety-nine K is what you separated out?
Yes, sir.
Or the hundred and fifty and the ninety-nine?
No, sir, let me back down.
We would put one-twenty-five on yesterday's budget register?
And so, but the sixty-one thousand is included in the 1.5. The Executive Assistant is included in the 1.5 estimate. Because that was already submitted to HR as a separate personnel request from the department. But the two that, basically, the two costs that are not included in the 1.5 but are included in the register, but I underestimated, is the eighty-eight thousand and the ninety-nine. Which realistically on the register, it would be a little bit different because the forty-four thousand would be the register impact. General fund?
How much do we lose on the sports park a year? They're just paying another hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars for a guy or woman to continue to lose hundreds of thousands of dollars, I bet. Where, is there a benefit in that? I mean, is it, where's the hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in additional costs for something that's costing us hundreds of thousands of dollars, even now?
Well, I would say I believe that generally, the sports park is a quality-of-life venue, and it's not really designed to be a moneymaker. However, I would say that it should still be managed. So, and we should try to be getting the most use and the best use out of the park. And that's what I believe a sports park manager would help us do. I think there's a lot more ability to coordinate and provide venues, provide a venue that attracts more events. If you have somebody who's overseeing it, somebody who's coordinating, making sure that the facility is ready for various events, both on the operational side and on the maintenance side. And that's where my recommendation comes from. That is definitely something we could put in as a performance measure.
Well, I mean, we talk about performance measures, but I mean, there's a big difference between not being a moneymaker and being a drain on our resources. And before I'm comfortable paying some hundred and twenty-eight thousand to the...
It's eighty-eight thousand with benefits.
Oh, this is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand?
No, sir. It's eighty-eight thousand total with benefits, sixty-six thousand.
What are the lines, sorry, follow this up. Even eighty-eight thousand, I mean, with the plan of, I know I don't have to make money, so. I mean, what's, what's the goal of where we were at? And if we spend another eighty-eight thousand dollars, where we're going in the future? Other than making it a prettier money pit?
Commissioner, I totally understand your concern. I agree with Betsy. Most of our, I mean, there are very few parks that make money. And parks are there as amenities for the community. I do like the idea, if we do this, that one of the performance measures is whether he's been able, or she, to increase our revenues and increase utilization, increase participation. I think the primary goal is to increase access to leagues and to families and to measure that. So I'm supportive.
There is, I think there is opportunities that we're missing to help bridge the difference between what we're paying out and what's coming in.
I mean, I agree with reorg, and, you know, thank you for looking into. I know this department is really complex because of all that it encompasses. But I guess in reality, this is just the beginning, because, I mean, it's highly likely that this department is very understaffed. I guess we still need to kind of look at the, and I know we got some figures regarding the three million that was taken out of the dedicated funds. And, you know, was there a decrease, I guess, as far as our knowledge so far, in staffing levels as a result of the funding loss that was attributed to it? Because not one hundred percent was picked out by the general fund.
I'm not aware of a layoff or a decrease because of the funding shift. There is never, in my time and since this funding shift, there has never been an intentional rift of public works positions for the loss of the road and bridge funding. I will tell you, I do think historically, the department did not have good data to support. And it's not that the data doesn't, it's not that the numbers don't exist. It's just they have not ever been a data-focused department to come bring forward information about... The ESD's presentation about growth, that's an impact to us as well. And we've never done that same kind of analysis for this department, and we need to. That's, so, I don't think there's ever been an intentional rift, but I don't think we've also analyzed and looked at staffing to accommodate the growth. And not just any kind of growth. I mean, I know years ago, we looked at a lot of colonia growth, addressing needs in colonias. But these aren't just colonias that have developed out there. There are very nice, well-developed neighborhoods in unincorporated areas. And so those have a different maintenance demand than a colonia does. But they're all important, and we need to assess all of that. Like, where are we at? What's our staffing per, even, we always talk about having six hundred miles of road we've maintained. Well, that's changed. I know that number's changed. And we need a new analysis about how many true county roads are there. I think there's a lot more county roads than six hundred miles. It's just how many of them are maintained and should be maintained based on population density changes.
That's why I should now...
Betsy, in your opinion, in recruiting a director that's going to oversee, do you think, number one, the pay that's being offered may be low? Or the fact that this immense unit, they look at that and they shy away from it?
I honestly think, I don't know that it's that people shy away from the immense unit, but I will tell you, as I'm looking at the individuals to manage this immense unit, I've been looking for somebody who can do a little bit of all of this. Somebody who could do all of this, or have some experience in several of these areas. Because there was not any strong subject matter expertise at a high level in these areas. And so that's why I feel like, and the workload is immense on one person. I have to commend Norma, because she has been an interim now for some period of time, and she is having to work to meet the demands. I mean, I can call her at seven PM in the office, and she's there. I call her at seven AM in the office, and she's there. She's having to work twelve or more hours a day just to meet functional operations. And so I think it was an immense workload. And I was looking for too much expertise in one individual versus spreading it out amongst different divisions.
And by doing this, you think it'll draw out more applicants?
Yes, sir. I think it'll draw more, the more qualified in each area. Because each one of these will now have a leader at the expertise level we expect, with an executive director to coordinate, make sure that they work together. Because these departments have to work together. It's just efficient. We are too interdependent on each other for anyone to operate in a silo level.
Betsy, I'm supportive of all of it. I will tell you, I am, and I've said this going back to 2007, when I first got here. I have always felt like we have, in some respects, set up this department to fail. Because we've not adequately resourced it. I still have that concern when I look at the salaries for your directors. You know, I'm not proposing to randomly or arbitrarily raise those salaries. But I know what department heads that do similar things like this get paid at the city, at the school districts. I don't know that we're going to be competitive. And I do feel very, very strongly, if we want this department to be successful, I'm going to say what I've said every year, just about, then, you know, we've got to adequately resource it. I just, I'm very concerned about that.
I think if we, I agree, but I think if we do this, I don't want to come back in like two years and say we need to consolidate again. Because I remember when I first came in, Parks was its own department, Facilities was its own department. And now we're, two years later, you know, breaking it out again. So, you know, hopefully this will help to, you know, remedy the problem. I agree that it's a huge amount of work for one director, for one Parks, or not Parks Director, but one Public Works Director. I can see the need for it. You know, I don't know if I'll be here in two years, but it's going to be difficult for, you know, if I am, if something comes up and we're asking for another reconsolidation, I'm going to remember this.
Just as a general note, like, on Slide Five, the structural assessment, you know, the way that, and I know that, you know, you all have been cranking out spreadsheets and working overtime and doing a lot, you know, that, this is, I mean, this is really the way that things should be presented to us as a court, you know, as we evaluate each of the elected and non-elected departments. Because, you know, going over each of the individual funds, I mean, while it's helpful, it doesn't really help us to capture the whole picture and needs of the department. You know, of like, how much, you know, the thirty-five million, you know, like, it's, you'd really have to, you know, sit there and add up which accounts at our Public Works. And, but this is a good top-line number, I mean, you know, as we evaluate that. And so moving forward, you know, and also having staffing, historical staffing tables in addition to historical budget tables. I mean, it's this kind of analysis that helps us to make more informed decisions. Because, you know, right now, we're having to, you know, go through, you know, a lot of the spreadsheets and other things.
And I agree. So do I, big time with all of you on that. What we were discussing recently with the budget team, the budget team also has a same struggle, where they'd like to be able to pull, for example, they're going to meet with, and I'm going to use Norma, and they want to talk to her about all of her funds. And we have a new MUNIS system, and they're talking about working with the auditor to develop an extra set of coding in the MUNIS account numbers, Edward? To be able to, because right now, we can't, we have to go and pick each account string, and they're not like easily to identify, pulling all account strings that are Public Works. And so we want to work to add something like a department-assigned code in the account string in our chart of accounts, a way to pull all, everything that is Public Works. Everything that is related to the sheriff. Everything that is related to the tax office. Because you do need to see that comprehensive view to fully understand a department and the impacts of budget and its operations. So we agree, and we're working towards that.
It's a perfect time to talk about the holistic approach of Public Works as well, and some of the things in the back. We need to figure out what items we're competing against the public sector for, for. We are not a small community with one county golf course. If we did not have a county golf course, people can still golf very easily on every side of town. And yet we lose close to a million dollars a year on our golf course? Pretty high, if you remember.
I think that's...
Oh, seven hundred thousand?
I think the whole park costs about a million dollars to run.
But, we're competing against private industry tax dollars. And doing a bad job of it, because we're losing a lot of money. Is there a benefit in continuing that service for a county golf course in the middle of the city that is competing against multiple golf courses that people would not be out and golf if we did not have? These are the questions that we need to ask. I mean, even turning that into a soccer field, because there's a lot more people who need areas to play soccer, or something else may be a better revenue generator. But I just don't understand why we're competing against the private industries and losing tax dollars to it. That's an issue that I had and something that, if we're going to be talking about Public Works reorg, something that needs to be discussed. What are we doing that's competing and not doing a good job of competing?
And I do think all of those, that's why in my comments, I said, in the Phase Two, we need to look at processes, budget, what are we offering? What should we be offering? How are we doing things? Is it even something we should be doing? You know, I still, well, this, we recently awarded the bid on paving. I still also think that there's more opportunities for us to take some of the projects that we do in-house and contract it out for better efficiency and better use of our staff's time. So yes, well, we may be staffed at a lower number in Road and Bridge. Maybe we should be contracting some of that work out and focusing just on maintenance, not on actual, the single and double penetration paving. So those are, those are some of our additional recommendations, that there is additional assessment needed, a Phase Two assessment needed in each one of these areas.
Yeah, I think that's, that's right. I mean, because, you know, for, I mean, I had a community meeting yesterday at Escarate Park. And, you know, for me, that's, the majority of my constituent calls are about Escarate Park, because all of my precincts are within city limits, basically. And so that's the only county property, you know, besides here, you know, that's basically within our area. And, you know, they're asking questions about the park master plan that we presented a year and a half ago, and what's going on with that. They're asking questions about the UTEP projects. You know, are we including any of that stuff in our budget? I didn't see any of it.
That would be in the CRP, yes, sir.
So if there is, it's going to be in CRP, which we haven't, which we haven't, I haven't seen it yet, but... And, you know, they're, you know, I read about the lake being dirty and seaweed and, or weed and moss and whatever, you know, and, so I mean, I think that, you know, that assessment is severely...
So, Betsy, is this, now, I can't remember in the management deal, do we vote on this, or, I can't remember what board you have?
No, you all, because I'm creating new positions and reorganizing a department, you all would need to approve this. I'm splitting up a department into basically four departments with an executive director.
Okay.
So you all would need to approve this. And it will add these amounts for your consideration on the register when you are in decision-making mode.
Okay.
That's when we request your approval.
Was it already on the register that was sent to us last night by Wally?
It was sent, but it's, there's some changes to the general fund.
The amount was one-twenty-five, we'll need to adjust that.
To, are you talking to be higher or...
General fund will be lower, or higher, I'm sorry. General fund will be higher, because it'll be about fifty thousand to general fund. So general fund will be lower than what's in there, and then special revenue will be higher. And so the budget register watches general fund. We would need to move it to a special revenue impact.
Betsy, before we vote on it, I would ask that you look at, and maybe you all did this, and maybe I'm, you know, speaking completely out of turn, but I would like to see how competitive those positions are with other jurisdictions.
I will tell you, when comparing with other jurisdictions, you also have to look at size of staff that reports to those directors. I thought about that, too. And I looked at both, for example, on the Planning and Development Director, I checked against the, like, APA, the American Planning Association, the types of positions that are advertised there. Looked at some other planning positions around the community. As you know, we also interviewed recently for a chief planner. Looked at what we were expecting in that versus what's expected in this job. So we can definitely bring me back some comparisons on that.
Anything else?
So Commissioner asked two questions, Judge, by May. You mentioned on the golf course, right now, today, this morning, golf course is $653,000 on revenue. Expenditures to date, $1,003,000. So we're about 650 in the red on golf course with seven weeks to go. So I expect it to hang probably, it might go up a little bit, but be pretty close to that level. Between 650 and 700, pretty close. And then you had asked Sports Park earlier, I was, I was working away on getting those. To date, 424,000 in revenue and 879 in expenses. So they are at about $455,000 loss. From a budget perspective, it was expected to be right in the $500,000 range. So they're going to be, they're going to be very close to that $500,000 mark.
Okay. Anything else?
And then I guess, how soon do we get, I guess, a more comprehensive look at the, the funding?
I think you're ready.
I'm actually ready, I have that.
Let me, let me log out.
Yeah, she'll get out and I'll hop in and pull it up. And, and Mr. Dion just sent me where it looks like Sports Park will finish the year. And then you ran those 17s as projections or actuals?
No, those are just actuals.
Okay, all right, so he's.
Yeah, but the projection is still close to it.
He's real close. I did 455, he's at 461 right now.
I just annualized based on the 10 months, then it shows that they're going to end up with expenses of $963, possibly a loss of $553, but that's preliminary. I think the revenues are going to be going up the next two months because they're in a busy season.
You know, this brings up a question that's floating around in my mind. We, we spoke about the Sports Park and the Scotty, as far as expenses as compared to revenue. Where do we stand with Coliseum?
So Coliseum, your contract is to give them no less, no more than 83% of the hotel motel taxes, adjusted annually for change in CPI. Next year it's budgeted at $2.8 million, rounding up. The Coliseum revenue side, I'll get that in just a moment. Let me just, let me get the Bourbon Bridge one and then, and then as I'm pulling that up and we're discussing it, I'll pull up the Coliseum net unless Edward beats me, which I'm hoping he does.
Yeah, I'll see what Edward can pull up.
Okay, thanks. So, finish this off yesterday after hearings. So Betsy's presentation she gave yesterday showing the revenue stream that has gone on for the auto sales taxes. Let me blow that up a little bit.
Not yet. We will forward this to the court?
Yes. So, starting in 2014, capital improvement dollars out of the one penny, which is general fund, was 560,000. We then funded the general administrator for Rhode and Bridge on the general fund size to the tune of 1.3 million, and this is actual expenses. But the county received on auto sales tax, $3.91 million. So the general fund net gain expenditures, less the revenue stream that we received for that fiscal year, was $2 million. Moving forward to '15, we spent 153 on, on Public Works' specific capital improvements, vehicles. On the general administrator of Rhode and Bridge staff out of the general fund, 1.3 million. We received that year in the general fund, $4.85 million. Net gain to the general fund, 3.39 million. 2016, quarter million dollars allocated to CIP penny, general funds of Public Works. 1.4 million on the expend, on the expenditures in general fund. We received 5.2 million in auto sales tax. Net gain to the county, 3.6 million. Current year, $240,000 in capital improvements from the general fund. I've added a number, as I send this to you, you see a formula that the, up here at the top screen, 1.94 is the general fund expenses that we spend on Rhode and Bridge this year. The $3 million one-time capital that you approved on Monday, I've added to that because that came out of the general fund. So total general fund this year is 4.9, so the net to the general fund this year is a negative 23,000. Looking at that net cumulatively from the time we started capturing the auto sales tax in the general fund and it came out of the Rhode and Bridge, the cumulative total net benefit to the county's general fund is $9 million. And I'll send that to you shortly.
Now, when Rhode and Bridge was at, I guess, at 100%, is that, is that on this chart?
So back when, yes, sir, back when it was 100%, you'll see this from 2010 going back. This is 100% Rhode and Bridge. So back then, 3.5, 3.5, 3.8. And I, the, the system, what we converted in system data from MUNIS, I can only go back to 2008. I'd have to go back to comprehensive annuals to go, go any further back, which I could if needed. So on average, the, the last three years, it was fully, well, it was average of 3, 3.6 million on average, a year.
Okay, then when the convert, then it would be.
So converting over is when that, that distribution started taking place. And then you'll see how it drops, 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 and then three years later, it's got, it is now all general fund.
So, so I guess what happened to the, what was lost? Was it, was it personnel? Was it operations? Was it?
No. So what they started doing, we did not downsize. The only time we ever downsized is when we were in the years 2008, '09, and '10, when we were doing risks.
We didn't downsize.
But I don't, I don't think we downsized. I'll go, I'll go back and look at those years. So what happens is by us shifting that classification of revenue to general fund as opposed to Rhode and Bridge, there, they had a pretty significant fund balance. It started being consumed, consumed, consumed. Whereas 18 months from now, their fund balance at the rate we're going right now will be nonexistent. So it's basically a consumption of reserves. I said, so probably the best thing to do to paint the best picture on this is to show you year by year how they finish fund balance. So what I'll do is I'll add a column to show you the correlation to fund balance. It just, it just, it paints a full picture as you can see what happened at Rhode and Bridge.
Well, I guess as long as nothing, I mean, it's, I guess, is, operations and staffing.
I'll, I'll double check our budget.
I can back up and tell you what we did do in, it was in the FY10. And what we did is we eliminated the Planning and Development Department. We shifted some of the people who were there to other areas, but we did eliminate, and it wasn't out of the Rhode and Bridge Fund, that was a general fund department. But we eliminated four positions from the general fund. One of them, I do believe we moved over to a grant, but the other three were eliminated. Then, in Facilities, we eliminated three full-time custodians. That was the impact to, and Facilities at that time was a separate freestanding department. That was the information, that was the... We had a community development department at the same time as well. We eliminated a grants writer and a special projects administrator during the 2010 reps. But not one change to the Rhode and Bridge funded line items.
So if we were to look at a historical staffing chart, how would it look? Constant, would there be dips?
I, I think there's been some pluses and some minuses. Where department, the department came in, I remember a couple of years ago, the department came in and recommended, let's eliminate this and add this. So, so there were some pluses and minuses over time. But I would imagine it's been fairly stable as far as Rhode and Bridge goes, when maybe it should not have been. And as a matter of fact, there's a request in this year in that 1.5 million. Well, it's not in the 1.5 million number because it's in the Rhode and Bridge Fund, but there's a request for Rhode and Bridge workers in this year's budget from the department.
Were you able to get that Coliseum number?
The revenues for this year totaled 531,474. Last year we brought in 624,000. And then we paid out an incentive out of the general fund of 136.
So the bottom line on that is what?
So the general fund revenue net of the incentive is 487,184.
And then we give 2.8, so about a 2.4 million operating loss.
2.4, 2.8? 2.4.
No, we, we give 2.8 in hot funds. And then we get back about, about 625,000. But then we have to pay back an incentive payment of another 100.
100, yeah, average is about 125.
So, so there's about $500,000 in revenue net after we paid that, and 2.8 in hot funds, so about 2.3, 2 to 2.3 million.
Net cost.
To operate the Coliseum.
Anybody else who give hot funds money to give us back whatever?
So, so the net cost was 2,244,000?
No.
No.
Last year.
You have one hot tax abatement with the hotel, we're creating one agreement, 160,000 a year.
Yeah, which we give directly.
Yes, we do.
But I mean.
That's the only other hot tax dispersment we make.
But we give them hot funds and they give us back general funds.
Yes.
And run the Coliseum. What was that, randomly, one agreement?
With Coliseum or with the abatement? The Don Quixote? Yeah, I'm sorry.
I thought it was this year.
No.
No, December of 2019, which is fiscal year, first quarter of 2020. So we're a little less than 18 months out from that contract ending. And that'll, that'll be 160 more hot funds we'll have available for county's towards promotion functions. Almost there.
Any other questions? All right, what's next?
So. Do you want that, that fund I just showed you with fund balances, just to show the correlation of the consumption of reserves? I mean, it's.
I mean, it's more the staff, I guess, I mean, it's more the staffing. Because either way, it would come out of general fund anyways. It was a decrease in the general, in the fund balance, right?
I'll shoot you, I'll shoot you that one as it stands. So the last thing, there's a circle back, wrap up for lunch, is our recap. So I sent you last evening, the latest version of the budget register. So you should have received that from me, budget register 8.8. So then, if we were to do an update here, based off of today, Public Works reorg on the general fund side would change to as a plus, 43,91. And then in the 1.5 number, the other positions that she spoke about are in, are already a component of the 1.5, so they're accounted for. The change on the Public Works side under Rhode and Bridge would be outside of the, the general fund.
Only one of the positions is on the 1.5.
Yes, one, one, yes.
But you already accounted for the 80 and the 43.
Yeah, the net, the net effect for the 80 to 40, and the 80 and the 44 is a 43 to the general fund. The, I just received an update moments ago from the Grants Division. And it looks like we may have an additional allocation of funding for the VAWA program. They're actually regrouping this afternoon internally, but it might not be that much more of an increase. So I'm going to leave this 170 as a placeholder, but I'm very likely going to bring that down to somewhere in the area of 160. I'm assuming 105,000. So it's going to go in the right direction. But that's in progress, but it's a, a good comment. And on the Protective Order Court, what Daniel was telling me is typically when you've got an application in and they're going to cut your funding, they give you advance notice that you need to bring your funding down. And Protective Order Court has not gotten that notice yet, so be cautiously, cautiously optimistic. But as, as we receive information, so I'm going to leave this as a placeholder right now. We'll move it when we get definitive information. So I just wanted to close the day out with a few, just a tweak to the, the budget register. We're still scheduled to go till noon today as a court. Oh, I emailed everyone the calendar, so you have the latest, greatest calendar.
When did you do that?
About 10 minutes ago. So your, so your calendar has been updated for tomorrow and Friday's hearings. So tomorrow, our heavy lifting is, is going over all the personnel recommendations. As a reminder, oh, on the big calendar, I didn't left the first hour.
I didn't get it.
You can clean it off the wall, please.
It came in with a group of stuff, and it says emailing 17, 18 budget PowerPoints, and it's in there. Okay, no, no, never mind, that's the ESD.
You didn't hit send?
Didn't hit send.
Okay, thank you.
I was like, huh.
That was a test, you passed two tests today, Commissioner. So in your box right now, should be binging across the board, is the updated calendar.
One express. It's going around.
I didn't say it was going quickly.
Here we go, here we go.
Got it? Everyone just went bing, bing, bing across the board.
You can click me on?
I will.
Thank you.
It's funny hearing your echo in a high pitch out in the hall.
I'm sending it to you. Okay, this is great. Thank you, Wally.
So, okay, yeah, I won't pull up underboard, everyone, everyone has it. That's updated through next, all the way to the 22nd. But we've added a couple of items next, next Tuesday, the 15th. So next week, we are posted for Tuesday all day. That's the only day right now we're posted for. And if we make good progress tomorrow, Friday, and Tuesday, we're, we're, should be good to go for next week. As a reminder, we do have a public hearing next Thursday, excuse me, next Wednesday at 5:30, and the following Monday at 5:30 as well, 5:30 and 6 o'clock for our tax rates. The, I will be placing an item on the agenda. If I don't need it and I need to delete it, I'll delete it. But on the action that you'll take tomorrow, listening to the presentation from Public Works on steps and potential cost of living in alignment with CPI, you will need to give us direction on, if you're going to grant any type of salary change, we have the elected official notice we need to make. So I'll have the publication of the elected official ad on the agenda for Monday as a placeholder in the event you stay consistent with what you have in the past, which I believe you'll hear tomorrow, that any, any pay changes you make may delete together the elected officials on that pay plan. And you'll probably get your recommendation to stay along with whatever you do for the general population. But that's for tomorrow.
Thank you, Wally. Anything else? Okay, perfect. We are adjourned.
Great, thank you.